You have a cellphone or pager? I don't mind a pager, but just put it on silent, please. So you don't interrupt to me. If you want to speak, please step outside. Under all business, ZBA 2530, Kimberly Rodriguez for variance to exceed the pavement parameters on the premises number 18 Bayswater, the applicant represented here. Step forward, please. Yeah, I will. If anyone's going to speak tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand. If you think you might speak, just take an oath. If you think you might. If you don't take an oath, you will not speak.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth that matters now in hearing?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening.
Amen.
Let me just... Oh, have this ready. Perfect. All right, for the record, my name is Kimberly Rodriguez. I'm here tonight in behalf of Mr. Ronan Drury, which is the beneficiary of the trust that owns 18 Bayswater. Following up to our previous meeting, it was raised by the board a few concerns in regards the pavement that was done at the property. One of them was the nature of the asphalt. There was an objection for a violation of the due process, and the board wanted to know a little more in regards the front yard coverage. We will be going over one by one. To start with full disclosure, right after the hearing on September 23rd, I drove myself to the property because one of the members of the board had brought to my attention that the asphalt laid there may not be pervious asphalt. So I went to the location. I used my bottle of spring water, whatever it is called, the one that has like gas, just to come to the conclusion that the board member was 100% right. It is not pervious asphalt. I obviously went ahead and get a second opinion, as I'm not a professional in the matter, and this third party did confirm that in fact it's not. We spoke about remediations. It is not like we can just go there and drill in.
No.
And, but he did mention that if we remove the three feet around the property line, this may alleviate some of that surface of absorption, especially in that back. I don't know if this allows me to. No, it doesn't. Because the topographic of the property right behind us, that water does come into our property. So if we open that gap, we will be allowing that water to soak in. At some point, that water will make it under the asphalt. And this may be like a good way to have this impervious asphalt coexist with the environmental conditions of the area. This is 18 Bayswater. In order to bring the property to look this way, the property owner had to do quite a few renovations. All of them were then with the appropriate permitting. And once the property was ready, we listed it for rent, and that's when we met the couple that is currently live at the property. Their only request in order for this to be the house that they were looking for was one extra parking space. Mr. Drury found out that there were actually two disabled veterans with a child with special needs. He immediately empathized with them and went ahead to basically satisfy the needs or the requests that they put in. He did not have any knowledge about having to pull a permit of it, otherwise he would have done it just as he did with the rest of the project. However, because...
Don't interrupt you right there. Who's the contractor? Because the contractor knows he has to pull a permit.
Correct.
Who's the contractor?
I submitted it with the package, PB...
A1 asphalt?
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Because the lack of knowledge does not absolve guilt. When, right when he had received the notice of violation, I believe this, one of the members said that the invoice is for the beginning of May, and he paid the fee and everything on May 15. I was reviewing the paperwork, and we started working on this. Unfortunately, unfortunately, it took a little longer because of the cancellation of the meeting and stuff like that, but here we are. The other concern that the board, or the information that the board wanted to have was in regards the front yard. The engineer and I were having a hard time to determine what was the actual front yard for the land with such a special shape, such a unique shape. I had the, so he suggested to go to the town to get the actual insert, and I had the pleasure of meeting Charlie at the building department, and he was very nice and answered all my questions, and we came up with the one on the left side. He pointed that this is what would be considered as front yard. As you see on the right imaging, all what we are covering with asphalt right now of that front yard is where it's marked on red with paved. And on the bottom, which is the new asphalt, is literally just a little corner. He did mention that the fact that the one on the upper part is 18 feet long already, we may not be in compliance, even if the other one was only three feet. I believe the regulation establishes it cannot be more than 20. I would leave up to the board, if in case this was going to get permitted, to leave that space, or we can also remove it. The only thing is it wouldn't look like static. But basically, while the new asphalt is technically laid on the side yard of the property, that's it. I mean, the regulation that we will be missing there would be the three feet from the property line to respect the setbacks. This is just to give you an idea of the land and what is covered right now with, like, the, if we were going to add the space in the bottom, it would represent 7.9% of the total amount of land, which is 5,542. And if we were going to count both as covered area, it would be 17%. There is always two ways to take a look at each situation. I would say the different perspective on this one is the impervious asphalt reduces risk and contamination coming from the cars that may be parked there, such as oil, gasoline, or heavy metals. It minimizes the soil erosion, and I had a neighbor reach out to me yesterday, actually in favor of the project, and said that on the left side of the property, the street goes to Winthrop Street, that road is pretty tight for like fire trucks and stuffs like that. So she believes that if we could remove cars from the street, it would be beneficial for the neighborhood. It would, so I would leave up to the board the best course of action on how to like to go about this. There is definitely a need for an additional parking for this size of property and with such a unique shape of land. The board is now aware of the need of the, of our tenants, but obviously you have the last word.
You know, you put the illegal asphalt on the right side of the property too, facing the water. I don't have a problem with the size of it, but that has to be ripped out, as far as I'm concerned, and I want pavers in there. The side of your house, all that water is running right down. I want pavers over there. You're in a land right there where all the stuff's coming over, and you're just going to lay it all down, and it's all going to... You have to get your cars off the street, because if you don't park there, you're going to park in front of the beach. I know what's going to happen down there. You're going to take spots that are always used. So I'd rather have you use that lot of land, but I'd rather see pavers on there. That's my opinion. I don't know. I've watched the video of what happened last time. They wanted the synergies and that, but I'd prefer you did have a place to park and get them off the street, especially if your plows coming around here and everything. Winter time, not lately. You're lucky about that, huh, council? But I would like that all ripped out and pavers put in. That's my opinion.
I concur with you. I think that you need to rip out the internal asphalt, put in the pavers, so that's better for soil. I understand you have an unusual shaped lot, and I also think you should have the parking off the street, so I concur with the chairman.
I concur as well. Plus, it would look better for pavers. Be a better selling point at some point, so.
I agree with the other board members.
Also, I agree.
All right, can I have a motion, please? Yeah, go ahead. Come on up. No one's spoken these last minutes?
My name is George Holland.
Wait a minute. You gotta wait till we get up there. Go ahead.
Sorry. My name is George Holland.
Yep.
And I'm Ann Ursin Holland. We're the tenants.
A forward mentioned tenants, both retired military. This property, you probably haven't seen the inside of it. Mr. Drury, we didn't meet Mr. Drury. We haven't yet met Mr. Drury, but we've met his representative.
No offense. What's the inside? You got to deal with the outside.
All right. It was a derelict house.
I know it was.
And the property, and I'm not sure, I'd like to just ask you a question. Is the question about the parking in back of the house or the existing parking in the front?
All the tile you put in, we want ripped up. We want pavers put in everywhere.
Is it part of the...
We're not the owners.
Oh, the owners will.
Yep.
Okay.
The...
I don't mind you even going closer, two feet. That's not the issue. The issue is the impervious stuff you have, there isn't.
Was it close to the seawall or in behind the house? Just, I'm curious, because there was existing...
It's asphalt on the ground right there.
There was existing asphalt on the ground before that.
And that was probably done 40 years ago. We don't do that. We don't rip up and put down stuff. We don't get permits, number one, and that's the owner's fault, not your fault. And the board agrees that we want that ripped out, cleaned up, and then we want pavers put in.
I don't, I don't know if you're aware that right next to the house is a city facility where there's parking regularly up on the grass and when they have events at House Neck. It, the people who are there have been wonderful. The city council has a frequently all summer, they have a fundraiser, they have a grill, they show movies.
For the kids at night, right?
And from where the lot is on the side of the ocean, which has been there for some time, marked parking, the entire front of that building is reserved parking just for people using the building or the boatyard. We've also been asked to not park on the rest of the street going up Bayswater, because the neighbors have said, and we understand it's narrow, it impedes them backing out of the driveway. So we're, we're very limited, and...
We're not taking away none of your parking. We're leaving it just the way it is. So all you're going to do is rip it out and redo it.
One thing that we're concerned about, and this house is on pilings.
Yep.
So any of the runoff from the back parking lot goes right under the house and gone. The... We're already there. Tearing that up now is going to be very disruptive to us.
That's life, though. That's life. They did something wrong to the owner. Well, I'm trying to understand why it was a renter arguing with the board.
Well, I'm trying to understand why you're such a combative tone.
I'm not, because you're trying to sit here and try and convince us that you want paving in there.
Well, this is a request for variance, correct? Is that a forgiveness thing?
Yes.
We're already there, and it's almost winter. One of the things that we park there is a camper van that we purchased.
For medical reasons.
For medical reasons. It's the size of a regular van. It's just a little bit longer.
I see him parked down there, you know, and I watch all the time what's going on.
Well, and we bought that for medical reasons, because we had to have a vehicle that we could drive that had a bathroom in it. We just wanted to... I don't know if there's a provision where you could delay the tearing out of it since it's already there, and we're just starting the winter season, but we would request, if at all possible, that you all give some consideration to that, since we're already living in the house.
How long is your lease on?
Well, our lease is for two years, and I will say it will disrupt to a certain degree events over that House Neck have in the house also, that they rent out for events.
Okay. It would just be a shame. It's brand new, looks great, aesthetically pleasing for the neighborhood. Everybody enjoys it, that we're not on the street.
What's aesthetically pleasing, sir?
Well, that we're not...
Your driveway?
That we're not parking the street.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
That we're not parking.
That's one man's opinion, sir.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. But anyways.
It's an important man's opinion.
I understand.
We're just asking for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak? Second call, third call, call it closed. They still say I want it ripped out. I mean, during the winter, that isn't used hardly at all. So it's not going to interrupt nothing down there with their plans, I don't believe. I might have something for Christmas around there, or one night, Thanksgiving, that might do something. But it's not going on all the way that down there. You can have a seat. Counselor?
Good evening. Dave McCarthy, Ward 1, Counselor, 48 Whitney Road, and I concur with the board. That area is, a lot of us know, has water issues, and anything pervious in there is helpful. When I first saw the black top that's to the left of the boathouse, it surprised me also that we, we had that in there, knowing that, how much we need for green, green area down there, green space and pervious soil because of what happens down there in Bayswater. It's just that low area with that parker smash, and we know it's coming. Also, the neighbor across the street, I don't know how long ago when we messed around with that driveway, we made it pervious, and we kept pervious on the radar at all times. I totally agree with the parking off the street. It's narrow. I'm looking at right now that corner of the Bayswater Boat Yard. If you go down there, there's some, there's some pretty good sizable stones that are around there. When they put the boats in there for the winter and in the summer, they never really come all the way back. So we might try to take a look at moving those stones in a little bit and creating some more parking right there on the, on the, on the corner, and we could probably go down with stone or something pervious there also, just to get more cars off the street. Also, to the point of the, the boathouse having events, now would be the time. The summer's over, the events are over. It's really quiet between now and the end of the year. The weather's still good, so I'd like to see the move on that. Now would be the time to take care of it, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, part of the hearing closed. I still feel the same, and it's going to be taken out and have the pavers in there. We made the neighbors do it, so.
Do you agree this board is not responsible for an alleged breach of quiet enjoyment? If the tenants feel that, you know, there has been a violation of their quiet enjoyment, they should look to the appropriate party for a remedy. We're here for the city, and it would be nothing to do with private remedies, so. My vote stays the same.
Sam?
Right. That pavement could be scraped up, and those pavers could be put down and completed in four or five days, so my vote will stay the same as well.
Please, Pam?
The John Himmold point, I actually work in property management, that paving could be swapped out in less than seven days' time, so I agree with the board to require pavers.
Same.
Can I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, ZBA 25-30, Ward 1, Kimberly Rodriguez, for variance to exceed paving parameters on the premises, premises number 18 Bayswater Road, Quincy, Mass. Move to allow the variance with the proviso that currently installed asphalt be replaced completely with permeable savers.
Second.
On the motion? Standing in all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. President of tonight's agenda, Raina Christina Nado, for variance finding a special permit to FOD to construct an addition up on the east side and west side of the dwelling, construct a two-story attached garage, reconstruct a nine-inch deep wraparound porch, nine foot, I'm sorry, and on the south side and east side of the dwelling, construct a multi-level porch in the rear and create new terraces and retaining wall on the east and west side of the parcel on the premises number 32 Bayview Ave. Applicent?
I love, just want to get things set out first. All right, I'm Samantha Cusick, Architecture, 867 Boylston Street in Boston. I'm here with the homeowner, Brandon. I'll let him introduce himself.
Can you hear her? Speak up just a little bit. I'm having trouble hearing you. Maybe it's the mic getting closer.
And I'm Brandon NATO from 32 Bayview.
So we are here with revisions that the board have requested to the size of the garage. So what I have up on the screen here is the revised site plan showing the garage that was pulled back about two feet on the west side and six feet on the south side. You can see the old outline here, and I'm going to jump to the architecture drawings. So this is the new proposed garage. You'll see that the proportion has reduced significantly in scale. I think this is much more proportional with the dwelling. The homeowners have made some very difficult compromises. You know, their goals for this garage, to bring this down. One of the things that we were able to do to drop the height, we dropped it by a little bit over six feet, and by doing that, we did sort of a split loft scenario. So the homeowner still gets a somewhat of a double height space here to accommodate his car lift, and then we have the loft just over this half of the garage. So I'll go to some elevations so that you can see the difference in height. So I think it's, the change, I believe, is fairly significant. I think especially on the eastern view here, you can see where it was almost as tall as the existing house. And this was one of the views that the board had mentioned at our last meeting. This is the western approach. You seen enough?
Yeah, I have. I looked at your plan. You've done everything that I've asked for you and the board asked for you, I think. It's beautiful. That's exactly what I would love to see.
Thank you.
Agreed.
I love your plans with the outline. I wish everyone who presented would do that. Thank you for doing exactly what we asked.
Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here, you can have a seat. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the new design? First call, in favor? Second call, third call closed? Anything new? No, nothing new. Anyone opposed or on the side? One second. First call, second call, third call. Want to say something, sir?
The cupola, would it be okay to put that back?
I think you got a nice little design there. I kind of like it, but...
Okay, that's fine.
I don't know. How big is it?
We can keep it as small as possible.
Four feet, two feet?
No, not six feet tall. She took away proportionate size that would look correctly for the garage, but we didn't want to push our luck, so we took it off this time.
Let me just...
I want to say the previous cupola is five feet tall.
It's probably more than three foot by three foot by maybe three feet.
It would be a...
Not to exceed three feet. How's that?
That's fine.
All right, you can work with that.
That, that sounds good, right? Not to exceed three feet, that would be...
Agreed.
From rich.
Makes all the neighbors happy and looks rich. There you go.
Thank you very much.
You can vote now. Counselor, would you like to speak before we do? I really would. You happy? Beautiful, gorgeous. You want a motion?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, ZBA-2538, Ward 1, Brandon and Christina Nado, for a variance finding and special permit slash FOD to construct an addition on the east side and west side of the dwelling, construct a two-story attached garage, reconstruct a nine-foot-deep wraparound porch on the south and east side of the dwelling. Construct a multi-level porch to the rear and create new terraces and retaining walls on the east and west side of the parcel on the premises number 32 Bayview Avenue, Quincy, Mass. I move to allow the variance finding and special permit slash FOD with the plaza of a cupola not to exceed three feet from the ridgeline.
Second.
On the motion? Standing in all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Thank you. Yeah, could I have a motion to move? No, ZBA 2546, we want to move that until November 11?
November 18.
November 18, sorry.
Don't they handcuffs for you?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2546, Ward 5, Elizabeth Wong, for a variance to raise the existing structures and construct a one-story, five-unit commercial structure combining 652-646 Hancock Street into one parcel on the premises number 652 Hancock Street, Quincy, Mass. I move to continue the matter to November 18, 2025 at 6 o'clock.
Second.
On the motion? Standing in all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. President of tonight's agenda, ZBA 2549, Rosanna Akeem, for variance to construct two bedrooms and a bathroom in the existing garage area, resulting in a full second year making the single-family home into a two-family dwelling on the premise number 19 Amsterdam. Advocate?
Hello? So thank you for your time. So we would start with us. So we have two beautiful daughters, and we have been living in Quincy for almost all our US life. They started in Waston High, Waston Elementary School, and now the elder one goes to North Quincy, and she was the ambassador last year, and he actually presented her the gift. So our, like, my, my father passed away, my mom lives with me, and my in-laws, my wife's mother and father, they moved in because in, back in our country, they have no one else to see, so we are, like, our request is to, like, you know, convert our garage into additional living space, which include two rooms and one bathroom. So this space specifically intended to accommodate our elderly parents. Like, we are not have any intention for commercial or anything like that, and they are old, they have health issues, and the hardship in this case is not a financial convenience, but a genuine family and medical need. So our parents and in-laws... So our parents and in-laws, like all, all three of them are above 70 at this point. And they need like, you know, live with us so that we can take care of them to, for their medical checkup and everything, you know? So, so, so the challenge here was that like the variance application was to have more, officially need more parking space. But we actually don't need that because they don't actually have driving license. So they, they will not need a car or anything. So this is our existing house. So just give me a second. So this is our driveway where we can park two cars and this is our garage space.
Yep.
So like most of the times when we come back from work, so we take our groceries, go into the house. So we don't bother parking inside the garage. So, but during winter, we, we sometimes we keep the car inside, sometimes we don't. But that's how it is the actual real situation. So in short, we are asking for relief under section 5.1 because this is a technical loss of garage bay, not because we actually reduce available off-street parking capacity. And this was the like, the original like plan. This is the garage space.
Yep.
So, so there technically there is a gas line here. So that's why it was asked for an additional unit. But we don't have a like working kitchen there. So our architect, based on the gas connection, he put it, it's a kitchen and dining space. This is actually not. So this is a living space that we use for our kids. So that's the actual garage that's, we are planning to convert into two bedrooms, so.
Do you have a half bath down there now?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the half bath down there. So this is the actual plan where like there will be like two tiny bedrooms and another bathroom here. So, and the, the important thing here to, like, I would like to highlight that the exterior, there will be no changes. So everything, the structure wise, it will be the same and maintaining the like, you know, harmony and character of our house and everything. So there will be no change. So this is just the interior conversion to have like more space for our family. So that's it. So I think, so if you can grant us this variance, that will like, you know, substantially help us for our purpose of taking care of our parents. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
I do get what you're talking about. I understand that. But you bought a house in Residence A. You don't get a two-family in Residence A today. We have never voted for that, we never will vote.
Okay.
So saying that, I would say if, if what you would do and if we voted and you just lose instead of this, why don't you just take, continue this again? Go look at a set of plans that you can all live in common. Because once they die, you got a two-family house. Now we got four or five cars. Now we got two families living there. Now they met, and then the neighbor wants one. Then we got a mess of a neighbor. We just destroyed the residence of that neighbor.
No, no, I, I get it, so.
So that's what I'm going to say to you. So we don't have to go through all night, everyone speaking and neighbors getting mad at neighbors. So here's what, here's what I'd like you to do. Meet with the department down there. Mr. Conlon will have a guy take care of you, show you how to build, what you're allowed to build in your home. You want a couple more bedrooms? All right, maybe, maybe you'll figure out something. You can't have a locked off, it can't be locked off. It has to be in one. You have to walk from one room downstairs, their bedroom, walk up to your bedroom upstairs.
Yep.
So there's, there's no, I'll put a door here when they leave. Because if some, God forbid, something happens, which has in the city, those people have gone to prison, so.
Okay.
You don't lock off and make apartments and try to get a rent or that. So I'm just telling you what, what we're trying to do to help you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So in the original, our idea was to get an additional dwelling unit. But the problem is that the, when there was a gas line, so when I talked to the inspector, he said like, look, you have a already kitchen there. So I cannot approve you for an additional dwelling unit. It has to be a two-unit thing. So our general contractor and we, when we talk about it and put in the plan, we never had any intention to make it a multi-unit house, you know? So our intention was to get like additional living space. So we did not even ask for exit door or anything that is required. It's just to have a like living space.
Why, why don't you meet with them again? Mr. Conlon, he could set that up. So make sure that they can sit down.
I think his name is Mr. Bruce. So I talked to him and he said that like according to the plan, it need to be a two-unit.
Why don't you talk to Mr. Conlon?
Sure.
He's the boss.
Okay.
You'll tell his guy what you need and just see if you can get it done and he'll probably get that.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
All right, so why, why don't we take your architect? Maybe it's close to the same drawing with a few other...
So, and may I ask you about the timeline? Because winter is coming, so we are in a...
It's all inside, what are you worried about? Not outside, right? As fast as you can get a set of drawings from him. When he says go do this, this, this.
Sure, sure.
Fix your drawings up. We can do this. Why don't we just put you off for four weeks?
Sure.
Talk with him, down the apartment, come back in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Two weeks, we need those drawings back.
In two weeks?
Week before? It's a date you have to have.
This meeting continues November 18.
That's the only meeting we have in November, so.
Okay.
I have to have them revise drawings by October 31 at 9:00 a.m.
It gives you like eight...
Sounds good.
Gives you 23 days, so.
Sounds good.
You should be able to get that done.
Thank you, sir.
All right, why don't we get a motion to move this? Were you all here to speak on this?
Yes, for variance of two families.
Exactly, exactly. If he wants to move his parents in there or another bedroom he's trying to add, we'll talk about that and then it'll be the 18th, okay? There'll never be a two-family.
Thank you.
It will never be a two-family in your neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, ZBIA...
Long as I sit, in these people's cities. I said, in these people's cities. Yeah, oh, sorry.
ZBIA 25-49, Rosanna Hakeem, for a variance to construct two bedrooms and a bathroom in the existing garage area resulting in a full second unit making the single-family dwelling a two-family dwelling on the premises number 19 Amsterdam Ave, Quincy, Mass. Move to continue the matter to November 18, 2025 at 6 o'clock.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Motion adjourned?
6:30, 7:00 p.m.
Before we adjourn, do you want to...
Oh, yes, please. Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Second.
Yeah, you want to write, read it so we know? Listen up, people, one second. We forgot this, my fault.
And move to accept and waive the reading of the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting of September 23, 2025.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Thank you, everybody.